Special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Jeffrey Pritchard is the Chair. Tonight, the Commission is staffed by a number of folks from the Office of Planning and Development Services. John Reiner is here, Paige Bronk, me, Deb Jones. Deb Gillett will be taking minutes, and we also have Town Attorney Rich Cody here. So, tonight, we do have an opportunity for the public to participate and to address the Commission. You need to do that under the public participation portion of the meeting. That's the only time you'll be able to address them. If you are on an Apple device, you can raise your hand by hovering at the top of your screen on a PC at the bottom. If you're on a phone, it is star nine. So you do need to raise your virtual hand so that we know that you want to speak. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Deb.
Okay, I'll call the Planning and Zoning Special Meeting to order. First item is roll call. It looks like, I guess, we're at full strength. So we'll move on to Public Communications. Does anyone on the Commission have any communications to report? Or staff? Does anyone in the public wish to address the Commission tonight?
Yes, we do have a number of folks with their hands raised.
Oh, before we start, we'd like to hold the the discussion with the presentations, maybe a three or four minute time period. We're not going to really make any decisions tonight, so it's not that important to to bring something up to us unless it's something new. And we are going to talk about how we address the communications we do receive from the public. So Deb, if you want to go and call down the list, because I don't see anybody on my screen.
Yep, I will go ahead and go down the list in order. I don't know who raised their hands first. So first up is Penelope Miller. I'm going to allow you to speak.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. In the proposed zoning regulations for the Mystic Education Center Floating Zone, it is stated that the regulations will apply to the Mystic Education Center and adjacent abutting or adjoining parcels deemed suitable by the Planning and Zoning Commission. I am advocating that the new zoning regulations be limited to the Mystic Education Center proper and not include adjacent areas such as the 16-acre parcel at 221 Oral School Road. 221 Oral School Road is on the opposite side of Oral School Road from the Mystic Education Center. It was acquired by the developer in order to be able to install a new road for accessing the development from Cow Hill Road. This new road would divert traffic away from the residential neighborhood at the lower end of Oral School Road and reroute it very close to residences on Hancock Drive. In addition to the access road, the developer is now proposing to build on the 16-acre parcel 71 residential units, comprising 16 buildings, two and three stories. Each building is that would house 2 to 10 residential units per building. The current zoning of the 16-acre parcel is RU-20, and that allows for 1 to 2 family units on lots no less than 20,000 square feet or about a half an acre. This computes to a maximum of 32 building lots, not taking into account the planned access road and wetlands on this parcel. That is 32 units as compared to the 71 units proposed by Mr. Raspeler. I believe that the zoning of this parcel should remain RU-20 to be compatible with the adjacent neighborhoods on either side of it that consists of single-family homes on half-acre or larger lots. The parcel should not be included in the new mixed-use floating zone. Much has been said of the demand for high-density rental housing among prospective EB and Pfizer employees. In the past, this area has been able, these employers have been able to attract plenty of qualified employees who value the advantages of living in a semi-rural area like southeastern Connecticut. The natural surroundings, the open space, the relative lack of overdevelopment in traffic, the ability to go biking on scenic roads or hiking on the many land preserves are attributes that many people view as amenities. Many of us have chosen to take jobs, build homes, and live in this area because of its peace and quiet and semi-rural character. Adding 931 residential units, over 1,000 people, hundreds of cars, would be a drastic change to our neighborhood. Let's at least reduce the impact of the proposed high-density development of Mystic River Bluffs on surrounding neighborhoods by limiting the Mystic Education Center Floating Zone to the actual Mystic Education Center property and by leaving the current RU-20 zoning of the recently acquired 16-acre parcel. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you for your input.
You're welcome.
Deb, you want to pick the next candidate?
Next person appears to be a phone number that ends in 6409, so I'm going to allow you to speak.
Hello, this is Roseanne Katalky, 24 Ann Avenue, RTM District 5. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. Wait a minute. Are you there?
We can hear you.
Go ahead, Roseanne.
Thank you for the opportunity to comment. Last night, we heard that the application process has not started for the mystical school project. So now would be a perfect time to eliminate or scale back the project. It is the responsibility of town officials elected and appointed to advocate for and protect the residents and taxpayers of the town. As we stated at the last Planning and Zoning meeting, the town of Groton zoning regulations should not be written for a specific developer. The regulation should be written for what is best for the residents of Groton and the developers must present projects that fit into those regulations. The developer answered many questions last night by stating he is, quote, "not ready to answer certain questions." The problem with that, of course, is that when the developer is ready to answer the questions, will it be too late to stop the project? If I understood correctly, last night, we were told that there must be a zone change to allow a master plan to be created. Then, a new tax change amendment allows the developer to change the zone in the master plan. Hopefully, the project will not get this far, but if it does, will it be too late to stop the project? The developer also stated that the project will be, quote, "built in pieces" and, quote, "phased in over years." How many years? Again, at that point, at the point that we find out this information, will it be too late to stop the project? Also, some Phase 1 apartments will be occupied without the hip little village built yet. The occupants will have zero amenities and no community center because it was stated last night that the community center will be completed in, quote, "Phase 2." Again, will it be too late to stop the project when this is discovered? The developer also stated last night that if, quote, "Phase 1 does not rent out, the developer will, quote, 'slow down the next phases.'" Will it be too late to stop the project when this happens? Also, the developer's, quote, "experts," predict that there will be 45 school-aged children from 931 units. Really? This is totally unrealistic. What if the experts are wrong? When we find out, will it be too late to stop the project? There are so many things wrong with this project that now is the time to eliminate or scale back the project. Another point is that the scenario presented last night by the developer regarding the residents in the units walking from the Mystic Oral School property down a dirt-and-rock path to River Road at night and walk a mile down a winding road with no streetlights and no sidewalks to party in Mystic and then walk back simply defies logic. It is absurd, outrageous, and ridiculous beyond any person's rational thinking. As the developer also stated last night, this project is a, quote, "vision of the developer." But this project is not the vision of the neighborhood. There is a lot to speak for the residents and neighbors in the northeast section of town. It is my understanding that the Planning and Zoning Commission can drive the design of this project as well as cap the density for the project. Please do it. The residents of Groton depend on our elected and appointed officials to consider projects that are appropriate and good for our communities. This project is not good for the community and again should be eliminated or scaled back.
All right. Thank you, Roseanne.
Thank you.
So you want to move on to the next person?
I do, but I do see Kevin Thifftle's hand up. Do you want, I see Kevin's hand up.
Deb, so if I could speak.
No, I'd rather listen to what the public says. We should not be responding to the public at this time, just listening. If we want to speak it or respond, do that after the public communications. This is not a
So I was just asking a process, I was asking a process question, Jeff, that's all.
Well, yeah, but we're not debating. This is not to be a debate.
No, I'm just asking a process question.
Well, what is it?
So the point is, well, the point is, we have great collaboration by, and a great number of our taxpayers on this phone. So we want to make sure that we have everyone have the ability to speak. Is there a time limit as far as each of these speakers?
Well, that's what I said. We try to limit it to three to four minutes maximum.
Okay, thanks.
All right, very good. Thank you. So the next speaker is Eugenia Villagra.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Eugenia Villagra, and I am speaking today on behalf of Groton Conservation Advocates to raise our deep concerns about the size of the proposed Raspeler development at the old Oral School or Mystic Education Center. In our view, this proposal in its present form will alter the character of the Mystic area and have severe impacts on our quality of life. We were concerned over a year ago when Raspeler staff presented a concept to the Groton public proposing approximately 750 rental units for the property. Now, Raspeler has come back with a proposal of 931 units, a nearly 200-unit increase. How many people will this development likely bring to the hill overlooking downtown Mystic? One can assume probably close to 2,000, as most units will have two people, some more and some fewer. This amounts to a new town in Groton. This concentration of additional people in Mystic Groton presents a serious threat to the quality of life of those who live in the nearby neighborhoods and to the Grotonites who already experienced long delays driving through Mystic and can't find parking in downtown Mystic to do a little shopping. This development is incompatible with the existing residential land use of the area and flies in the face of existing zoning regulations that call for neighborhood compatibility. 9.4 through 6C neighborhood compatibility. The design elements of the proposed development are compatible with the development in the district and the surrounding area or areas and do not hinder or discourage the orderly development and use of other properties within the area or alter the essential characteristics of the area. At last night's Raspeler presentation, we listened to the many statements of neighbors who expressed very legitimate concerns about blasting, water usage, sewage disposal, heavy traffic in the area, impacts on downtown Mystic, and more. The problem with our permitting system is that the developer hires all the experts to do the studies to answer the questions raised. This development is so huge and will have such a tremendous impact that the town of Groton should also hire experts to get an impartial evaluation of the carrying capacity in at least the following areas: traffic, runoff control system, sewage system, water intake system, impacts on downtown Mystic. While there were other development proposals for this property presented to the town, the Planning and Zoning Commission was shown only one, the Raspeler proposal. We suggest that looking at others might help inform you about the appropriateness of this one. This is not just another development in Groton. This one has potentially seismic consequences for our town, and we urge you to proceed with great caution. Thank you again.
Thank you for your input.
Let's see here. Next is Robert Wilt.
Do you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks to the members of the town staff who were there last night. That's above and beyond. Now, I'd like to simply make a statement. There's no doubt that the housing project planned for the Oral School site will bring increased taxes to the town and possibly even increased business, but at what cost to the quality of life for the town's residents? Not only will it have a serious impact on my neighborhood, I will on Boulder Court, but on all of Mystic, eventually the town as a whole. Bear in mind, in the not-too-distant future, three schools in different parts of town, S.B. Butler, Mary Morrison, and Claude Chester will close. What might the planning department choose for these locations? As you know, there is already an apartment complex in the works at William Sealy. You, as members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, have the power to stop this creeping urbanization. I urge you to not amend the current zoning regulations to allow this unsuitable development at the Oral School. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Let me see here. Next is Scott Westervelt.
Good evening. This is Scott Westervelt with Seven Boulder Court, Mystic, Connecticut. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just going to make some quick comments. And some of what I had heard last night was a little disheartening. We've been told all along that there were studies done that through conversations, or excuse me, through their own investigation with Pfizer and EB, they need this property up there. Yet last night, Mr. Raspeler said that they were casual conversations where they gleaned, Raspeler Homes gleaned that this was needed, but it's not something that was stated factually or any empirical data to support needing this development for EB and Pfizer. That's one thing. They've added the Ring Road around it, and now last night, for the first time, we got to see that they've also now included a fence. Question last night was how far is the road going to be from the property line? And where they originally said they were not going to do anything within 150 feet of the property line, now we find out that this road is going to be 60 feet off the property line. So we asked about Lloyd's Abatement and that type of thing, and then we asked about the fence. So he's envisioning, I'm not saying he's envisioning, but what I gathered from that was that there will be basically sound barrier walls built around the property facing Oral School Road. Right now, we're looking up the hill, and we see wildlife, we see deer, we see everything else. Now, we're going to have a, basically, a sound barrier like you see on the highway separating us from this development that's built up there, which that is very disheartening for me. Additionally, we talked about dead-ending, and it was never a fact that they were going to dead-end Oral School Road to prevent people from coming down here. But Mr. Raspeler, they indicated that the new road that's going to be built through the Ferguleski property is going to feed vehicles out onto an intersection, onto Cow Hill Road. But I think everyone knows that if the road is open between Upper Oral School and Lower Oral School, people are not going to want to go way to the green light. They're going to come down through our neighborhood. And you absolutely cannot put two vehicles side by side at my rock wall and Mr. P.'s rock wall. Two cars can't pass through there. So where all this extra traffic is going to go, it's going to come right down my neighborhood so they can bypass that light, and that's going to have a huge impact on the quality of life down here. Cars are already speeding crazily down here. My neighbor just had another baby. He's got three children, and he's right on Oral School Road. They're in danger as well as people pulling out off of Boulder Court onto Oral School Road. So those are my comments. If you make this zoning change, you're going to destroy this neighborhood that's been here for many, many years. I actually had a policeman one time come over here, and he said, "You know what? I didn't even know this neighborhood existed." But now, everybody's going to go flying through it. They're already speeding down the road. So those are my comments. I hope you'll take into consideration of this when you decide to make your zoning changes. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thanks for your input.
Thank you. Next, I have Mike Whitney.
Okay, I think you can hear me now. Good. Thank you. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak, Mike Whitney. I'm a RTM representative for District 5, and this project is in District 5. And obviously, it's going to have a great impact on it. I have some questions for the zoning commission, and they largely sent around, what is the guiding zoning for this location? I understand that's going to be specific for this location, but I went through the different zoning types, and I didn't see any that really fit well. But what I did see was particularly in building heights. The building heights that we heard about last night, 55, the between 45 and 55 feet for most of the buildings, maybe 60-foot-high parking garage, 90 to 100 feet tall. That far exceeds what I saw for any of our zoning areas. Most of them are max at 35, and others 45 feet. So I'd like to see building heights limited, and I'm concerned about setbacks. I know there are some large setbacks for the buildings. I'm concerned about setbacks of the new roads. They're right along the property boundary, or they say within 60 feet. And that's putting a lot of traffic through a lot of people's backyards. So I think that's something well within the zoning commission to urge for more bigger setbacks. Along with that sort of connected, there are two wetland areas, and one of the roads, actually, in two places, the planned new road is going to go right through wetlands. One's on an existing driveway, but obviously, the traffic is going to be much higher than it is for current residential driveway. I think it's very easy to circumvent paved roads in those wetlands areas just looking at the plan, and that would help with the setbacks. I haven't heard all that much about stormwater. I would assume it'd have to be contained within the site. And that should be quite important because with all the impervious surfaces and the many, many cars that'll be there, the potential for stormwater pollution is much larger than it would be right now. And then, overall, I am concerned with the size. It just doesn't seem like a fit for the area. In fact, it doesn't fit with the area. It would be creating a new, really, urban area. That urbanization was a good term to describe it. I was concerned with 750 units. That was what, November 2019? Then, by February 20, February 2020, it was up to 850. And now, we're up at 931 units. That's a 25% increase. And some of that is because of the extra area that's been added. But that extra area could actually be used to spread out the development and keep the number down smaller because if the developers thought it was economically viable at 750 units a year or so ago, I imagine it still would be now. And that 25% is based on units, but actually, the new units are disproportionately adding 2- and 3-bedroom units. So actually, the project size in terms of bedrooms, which I encourage you to look at, has gotten quite a bit bigger. And then, I understand that Raspeler Homes is the preferred developer. And therefore, there is a relationship with the town and the planning department. But I urge neutrality, both in terms of the commission and and the planning department, and to strive to avoid any appearances of, you know, advocating for the projects or any projects because it is important to bring new projects and new people into the town. That's part of the charge, but also preserving and considering the existing residents is a big part of it, too. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for your comments.
Thank you. I have John Waller.
Yes, hello. My name is John Waller, and I live at 116 Godfrey Road in Mystic, about a mile from the project. My particular interest is to save and renovate the theater at the Pratt Building. So that's, it could serve as a hub for the performing arts in Groton and Mystic. Obviously, I think that everybody's aware that part of the gift, if you will, of Raspeler Homes to the town is renovating the pool, gymnasium, and theater complex there. So that's my particular interest. However, regarding the project itself, I do hear the concerns from the neighbors. And living a mile away from there, I'm not quite as close as those folks on Boulder Court. And I understand their apprehensions about how the project may impact their neighborhood as it exists today. But I want to state my firm support behind the project as a driver of economic development for our town. So obviously, there needs to be a balance between the residents' needs and economic development of the town. I just feel, and again, as a neighbor, not quite as close as some others, I think that the design with the Ring Road with the close access to 95 is going to do a lot to mitigate the traffic. It would be good if there was some way that the, that the road could be prevented as an outlet to go down what's left of Oral School Road. But in general, I believe that the economic benefits to the greater Groton area will far surpass the taxes the project itself will bring to town and in the way of the taxes that Raspeler will be paying, the residents there, their property taxes, the additional economic activity in the town and the vicinity at large. Obviously, there'll be services to be provided by the town, but Groton urgently needs economic development and needs to bring in new people to continue to grow our community. So I just wanted to, again, state my firm support for the project. Unfortunately, I only found out about this meeting just recently. I didn't have an opportunity to prepare an eloquent presentation, as some of the people who've spoken before me have, who know all the rules and regulations. So I just would like to say that somehow, I don't know how, but it would be great, a project of this magnitude, it would be, it would be great to see people from not just the neighboring community to be involved in the planning, but also those in the whole town who would potentially benefit from the overall project. So thank you very much. I appreciate your work on behalf of the citizens and residents of Groton.
All right. Thank you for your input.
All right. I do not see any other, just make sure, there are no other hands raised among the attendees.
Okay.
Hang on, wait, excuse me, Jeff. Someone just raised their hand if you're willing to.
All right.
Sorry. Yep, so I have Charles Peterson.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Hey, just for a little bit of context, I've been working at EB for three years out of college, so I just thought I'd bring my perspective in. And thank you all for your time. A lot of my coworkers that are just coming out of college and starting work at EB, because, you know, they're hiring like crazy right now, are having trouble finding apartments. And, you know, there's a lot of effort trying to, you know, see who else is available and who they can room with and find somewhere that's both close, and like some people have said before, urban. So even though it might seem like it's a little out of place, and I totally understand that this is making a change to the lives of many people who have committed to the area, I'd also like to say that there are definitely positive aspects of adding an urban development within the city of Groton that's close to EB, which, you know, is going to be hiring several thousand, you know, new employees that are coming out of the school age, you know, within the next couple of years. And, yeah, I wish, I wish some of these apartment buildings are around, and it was a little bit easier to find places when I started two years ago. And I know a lot of people now that, you know, could really And I know a lot of people now that, you know, could really use it and especially having somewhere that has kind of like a communal area with like a theater and some outdoors. It it's really nice. I mean, the other thing I'll add is now that a lot of us are working from home, I'm spending almost all my day in my apartment. So to kind of have somewhere that's in a complex like that where you can we where you have communal areas and where, you know, it's, it's a nice apartment. Now that'd be great. I I I'd really be willing to pay pay a premium for that. So yeah, just, just at least my perspective, it's been hard finding apartments. I know a lot of people that are looking for them and want to be close to EB. And there's a lot more people coming and I think it could be something that could help revitalize the town. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for your input.
Thank you. I have Chris.
Hello, sorry about that. Hello?
There you go.
Um, Chris and you know, I live in Groton. Actually, I'm the co-founder of the New England Music Hall of Fame. Listen to a lot of what everyone has to say. Again, I'm more, I'm interested in a lot of the other performance hall, actually. And bringing in a lot of both local and international talent to that vicinity. I do believe, yeah, maybe it would be best to have a more of a balance on the property itself. However, regardless, nothing's really going on in Mystic and there's a lot of downtime between, you know, the seasonal, the tourist season. So in actuality, it really won't impact the area that much. In fact, it might even make it better, just so we can have stuff to do, really. So that's my insight on it. I mean, I don't, I understand what everyone's expressing in regards to their neighborhoods, but in actuality, nothing really happens that much in downtown Mystic between tourist season and well, between everything else. So I do believe it would actually help, especially if you have a performance hall right on that property. So that's pretty much it.
All right. Thank you. With the end of the list now, Deb.
It it looks like Scott Westerville would like to speak again.
Well, if he has something new to state, I think most of these statements have been repeats.
Should I allow him to speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Good evening against Scott Westerville. I apologize, but this is something new from what we learned last night. Apparently with the garage that they intend to build, it's going to have two subterranean levels of parking. And the hill it's going on is sloping downhill, but it's also nothing but rock. So blasting, which has never been answered yet, blasting now trying to go down for two floors of subterranean garage is going to play havoc with the neighborhood directly below. So those are my comments and and that's based on the new information from last night. Thank you very much.
And and I have the phone call six four zero nine asking to speak again.
Thank you. This is Roseanne Katuski. I would just like to say that regarding, I would like to comment that in response to what some people have said, the planning and zoning commission did insist on details regarding the amount of taxpayer dollars will be spent to support these projects, including sewer, water, streets and roads, utility, infrastructure, traffic, school assessments, staff time, and especially tax, tax, or tax abatement, et cetera, which I totally oppose. Then deduct that amount from the proposed revenues that may be generated from the property. Then determine if the project is worth it. Now, my friend Chris and Nino, I just have to remind you that we have three theaters in Groton. We have a theater at Fitz Middle School, we have a theater at Fitz High School, and we have a theater at Avery Point. And one more thing, regarding the electric boat employee, I am praying that you keep your job. But I've lived the electric boat roller coaster ride. Right now, we're at the top, but we never stay there. And if you check it out historically, that's a fact. So hopefully Groton will continue the trend. But we have to prepare that it may not always be that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Roseanne.
And I believe that is it for public comment.
Had a lot of comments. All right. So we'll move on to our old business, which the first item is a discussion of public inquiries, how we're going to handle those. I put out, put these in a form of a matrix to try to get a handle around them and come up with how we want to to handle these comments. So I thought I put them into some separate groups with the thoughts that some of these are definitely not items that under the jurisdiction of the planning and zoning commission. And I don't know if staff wants to address those, those we could probably address right now. The others, I think we've got to figure out how to, how to address them, whether we want to just keep track of them and and in a matrix form, because they can't be answered right now or and just state that to the public or we could come up or try to state, go through everyone and state what we want to do. Do with them.
I would suggest that we can get all bogged down, just answer, starting off by trying to defend or answer comments. We need to back up and take this off from the beginning. You know, we're, we're kind, we need to have all these details being thrown at us and a whole plan being thrown at us. Now, we haven't even ever gotten together and decided what we actually wanted up there from the planning commission start. So I think maybe we need to actually hear from, from staff as to how did we get to where we are and start to react to that. We can get bogged down in the details later. I mean, there's so many little details that we could respond to, how we can fix. We put a chain across the road to block off a road. We can use a burn to block off view and sound. We can do all these little detailed things. But I don't think we should get bogged down in those yet, because I don't know when we've ever agreed on doing this whole plan, putting a thousand homes in this area. Maybe it isn't the right thing, but we, we've never come up with that. In fact, we, as a body, I think it's always been the feeling that this wouldn't be a dense area and downtown would be the dense area. So I'd rather we just kind of backed up and eased into this whole plan first and then.
Well, that's why I try to put them into high level descriptions, because I don't think we can answer or say this is a detailed method to solve this, you know, one of these specific problems. We really should start thinking about what we want to end up with, because we're going to have, we're facing a discussion soon on this proposed text amendment. And we really shouldn't agree to that till we have some basics like you're saying. But we had last, our previous meeting, we had discussion over how we respond to the public. And maybe the response is we maintain a list of public concerns and will be addressing those as we go through develop. You know, and leave it like that. But there are certain items like the blasting issue that came up again tonight. That that one, we should be, or staff can say who's responsible to solve that. That's not a planning and zoning issue. Or like you say, if we want to shutting off Oral School Road, I'm not sure that's really his too. Other than we recognize that something has to be done with with the traffic. And other than specifying something has to be done, I don't know what we can really do. But I don't know what other people have for thoughts.
Kevin has his hand up.
Who does?
Kevin.
Well, yeah, I can't really.
So I'm, I'm in favor of what Hal said. So in many ways, you know, we have this mission as the planning and zoning. Even in our regular meetings where we're starting to take these questions, and I have to say, they're all great questions, right? If I lived in that neighborhood, let alone living in Mystic, I would have exactly the concerns, whether it's the strengths or weaknesses that the people have brought up. But for the moment, you know, I'm just questioning whether it's planning and zoning for the moment. We haven't set the template on what we believe is the possibility for this particular property. So for us, the answer to the questions is like we're going ten steps down the road when we haven't covered the, you know, the first eight steps. And my point is, I think as a planning and zoning in lock with the town staff, we have to basically set a pattern that says, we're Restblower last night, did a presentation, raised some questions. There's also a very positive presentation. And I think we need to start taking some stakes along the way in that this is what we believe as a project that we as a planning and zoning commission could live with. Those are my thoughts, Jeff. Thanks.
Yeah, I sort of share some of this. I mean, it's more from a planning and a P O C D look that this is probably questionable and it's the impact to the community or the town, not just the neighbors. But it could destroy the, the sense of Mystic as a small New England village, which could be of concern. It's not just, I mean, we're talking about a forty to fifty percent increase in population density in this one small area that's semi-rural. But I I think that the concern is that were raised last, on Tuesday, last meeting about doing something with the public comments is appropriate. It's just how do we handle them? And maybe it's too early to come up with specifics other than just the subject matter that we, subject matters that we have to address. Maybe that's all we should be doing it right now and then figure out which ones are the ones we want to tackle.
There was some way that we can publish, at least maybe have a minute someplace or have the list of items that have been, that have been brought up that we intend to address.
Well, that's what I was.
Knows, we are looking at these things. We're not ignoring these fifty things, whatever it is it was. They will be addressed.
That's what I was thinking might be the best way. That's why I developed the matrix.
Right.
Which sounds like we probably have another couple of items to add from tonight and as a result of tonight and last night to, but keeping them at a fairly high level issue. And then we won't lose track of it, because it's such a complex issue. I don't know if staff has any comments. I mean, it might be good if you can, if staff does have, you know, the responsibilities or how things are controlled. Like blasting, I thought you had the blasting permits to go through, but what, how that's really controlled and whether it's effective or not, I have no idea.
So, um, but let's start with with Hal's question, I think, first, you know, how did we get here? So we have been, we being the planning and zoning commission have been talking about the redevelopment of Mystic Ed Center for probably a year, year and a half now, ever since the state decided that this is excess property and they are going to sell it. Back before COVID hit, back in February and March, we started talking about how would we regulate a redevelopment of this property? And initially, we were thinking we would, we would do something like develop a regulation that allowed the reuse of historic buildings to a use that might not be allowed in the underlying zone. So similar to a regulation we have right now. And we, we thought about that, you thought about that for a while, discussed it quite a bit and then realized that it was, it was just too unwieldy, because we were trying to develop that regulation to be appropriate for the entire town. And it was hard to think about what other historic buildings might able to use this to be redeveloped. So the direction you gave us was, let's develop a regulation that's specific to the Mystic Ed Center. Because we know that that's going to be redeveloped. Let's just acknowledge it and and come up with some way to allow the redevelopment of the property that is already disturbed, is already developed. And so from there, Jeff Davis from Horsley Witten started to put together the ideas that he heard from you folks at meetings to try to come up with a method to redevelop it. As you know, right now it's zoned RU eighty, two acre zoning that clearly is not going to allow the redevelopment of of historic buildings on the site. So so the the option that we came up with was to develop a text amendment that allowed a change in the zone that's tied to a master plan. And that master plan would guide the development on the property. So that, that's how we got where we are today. It's just been recently that I think the public have become aware that, okay, this thing is really starting to move forward. And they're, they're starting to understandably be concerned about what that development might mean to their neighborhood. So I think there's a number of things that we've heard that Jeff has put into his matrix that are things that can be put into those regulations. You know, density, whether or not the utilities are adequate. You can put that into the regulations that say, you know, you can't develop unless you can prove to us that there's adequate utilities. And so we're trying to use the comments that we're hearing from the public as well as from you to revise the drafts that that Jeff Davis has been producing. John, you want to add something?
So I think also, Deb, very good comments. I think it's also important that as part of the zoning, that is setting a a general framework. I think people are concerned that if the zoning regulations are adopted, the project's going to happen. That sets a framework for what could happen out on the site. The commission still has the ability to deny any zoning map amendments, which would make the zoning text actually applicable to this property. And the same thing with the master plan. A lot of the details that people are bringing up as questions right now, great questions, things that we can work into the regulations. But those are things that will be looked at at that master plan stage. I also know we were going to talk process a little bit and some of the bigger picture things about the master plan and the zoning with Rich Cody as we dove into the zoning a little bit, so that might help too. If people want even a little bit more background on the project, I know Paige could probably jump in for a minute or two and just even talk about how the town has been talking about the redevelopment as a whole of this property for over forty years, for at the council level. And this is a state property and there was a competitive bidding process that was done jointly by the town and the state. And Restblower was picked as the preferred developer through that process, presentations to the council discussions there. And then that got us to this process starting before the commission.
Well, should we, should we be addressing how, what this zoning regulation works and how the, that fits in with a master plan, since we have the attorney here tonight? Is it worthwhile going into that?
Yeah, I I think it would be helpful to have Rich do get into that. He's going to talk a little bit about zoning, the bigger picture. So I mean, it it kind of jumps a little bit to the next agenda item, but I think all of this is very, they very much get blended.
Okay. Well, good evening. I'm happy to, to talk and maybe give a quick primer just on floating zones. And it's a good point to take off from what Deb and John were talking about in terms of how this can be regulated. A, what they're, what's basically being presented here is either a floating zone or a planned development district process. And the courts have said these are perfectly legitimate land use control mechanisms and that they are legal. Supreme Court said it several times. An ordinary floating zone procedure, which you may be familiar with, is where a set of regulations is adopted in advance, but without landing those regulations in a particular area of the municipality. So you have, it's a two-step process essentially. You, you adopt regulations for a zone that hasn't landed somewhere. And then the next, the second step would be to, to land it through a map change. So you have a pre-articulated set of standards that you wind up map, you map anywhere in town or anywhere it's allowed to be mapped. And, and then those, those regulations become applicable. It's typical Euclidean type zoning where the, the regulations are articulating standards and how the uses are landed in the zone or actually built in the zone depends upon your table of uses with special permits and site plans. So what it means, what I'm emphasizing here is that when you, when you land a floating zone, you, you're not really given much of a conceptual plan as to what's going to happen in that site before you even get into the administrative permits. The, the planned district procedure is somewhat different what in procedure, because it combines the floating two-step process into one process. And what, what happens there is you, there's a set of regulations that allows an application for the development district to be filed. And it's, it's accompanied by what's called a master plan. And a master plan, you can call it anything you want, but it winds up being a particular, acting as a particular set of regulations that, that you then land at the same time as you land the, the map change. And it's, it's both the floating zone and the planned development district are referred to by the courts as essentially carving a district out of a district. It's not, it's not a perfect analogy, but you, you, you get the sense that you have a zoning district with an underlying zoning and inside it you put a new zone. The most applications for new zoning districts, if you stand back and say, well, how do we create a zone? You write regulations, then you draw the boundary lines. And the town recently went through a rezoning, so you should be pretty familiar with that process. But the master plan process or approach to it is simply a more sophisticated document. And it's one that provides the commission and the community with a greater sense of specificity as to what's coming. And it gives a better basis for solid planning. So the, the master action plan with all of its designs, all of its, it's, you know, the building's going to go here, it's infrastructure showing, actually becomes the set of standards that, that you would measure the, the site plans with. So in a typical application, you only have a use table with no, not even a preliminary idea of what's coming. But with the master action plan process that's being, that was put together, you're, you're getting at the legislative level, an opportunity to look at exactly, not, maybe not exactly, but a good preliminary and approximation what, what's going to happen on that site and where. And the regulations that I've read require an enormous amount of technical information, even at that stage. So you'd be looking at procedurally, what you're looking at is essentially a rig change and a map change all at the same time. And as you probably know, you have very wide discretion in respect of approving or denying that. So that's a quick primer on, on floating zones. Happy to field some questions if you have them.
Anyone have any questions?
In the case of putting in approving a master plan, let's say we have it worked out and we know it'll drain and we know it'll do whatever we want. And let's say Wrestler says, and we come up with the density and here's so many buildings we actually would like rather than what's shown on what Wrestler's shown and things like that. And Wrestler says, I can't make a living doing this. Thank you for the opportunity, but goodbye. Are we now stuck with that master plan? Until we make a, go through a process to change it?
Well, oh, well, again, you could, you could, you can always amend the regulation.
Okay. So we'd be able to pull out things we like and just kind of redo it somewhat. Right.
Also, just to quickly jump in there, as part of the master plan approval process, Wrestler is gonna talk to you about what is financially feasible and what is not. I mean, that's part of the, the negotiation of a master plan and landing the zone. So I think we will know if that development that the commission is comfortable approving, if it works or if it doesn't. And if it doesn't, it's gonna, it's gonna stop there or think things will get changed or it won't move forward before it even gets approved.
And I just, so I was just curious, what would happen at that point with the other proposals that came in? Do you go out to bid again or do you open up and decide on another one and we'll just be able to see that one proposal then? That's a worst case saying, you know, things fall apart with the Wrestler.
Yeah, I think we would put it back out to bid again with the state because it was a team of state and local representatives that chose Wrestler as the preferred developer. And, you know, even at this time, those proposals are now a couple or a few years old. So things would have to be modified and changed. And, and Wrestler was chosen because they were the, the best developer that seemed the most capable of taking a project to fruition. Paige could certainly weigh in a little bit on it, but I think it's, it's almost a little inappropriate to get too far into that proposal process because it was a state land bidding process.
No, you told me enough. That's good. That's all I wanted to know.
Oh, Rich, this is Kevin. So first of all, thank you. I, I like the process. And that was the very first time I've heard it laid out in that fashion. So it really allows us, I think, to go down a path and make some decisions. But when you talked about the technical details, which I would talk to be some, some of the precision that we need in setting that master plan, is that a lot of the questions that the public is asking right now? That'd be encompassing to ensure that we meet the criteria of what the public has asked. Is that part of the technical criteria, Rich, that's in there?
Yeah, yes, Kevin. As from what I heard from the, from the comments I listened to, and I haven't attended, you know, all the other meetings. But the, the technical questions about traffic, road construction, location, buffer, height, distance between uses, sanitary sewer, public water are all elements that the, the applicant for the, for the floating zone to land it will have to satisfy you with, with, with technical elements. So you're going to be getting an enormous amount of detail at the zoning stage, at the right adoption stage that you ordinarily don't see until you get into the, the site development stage. So what, 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 what this process allows for is a comprehensive view of the entire development of the zone, which will probably come in phases. And, and you'd see it pretty much all at once in, in quite a bit of detail. They were naturally because they, they, they haven't dug into the ground. They don't know exactly what they're going to find when they start laying roads. They may have to move things here and there. You'll see in the regulations, some flexibility built in for them to be able to shape their site plans in such a way that they, you know, they, they can develop it in, in substantial compliance with master action plan, you'll see.
So in effect, what Jeff is, what Jeff is creating really is part of the template that we need in order to ensure that we have hit some of those technical details when we go to the master plan.
That's right. And, and recall, remember too, that the, that because it's a rig change and, and a boundary change, you have to hold public hearings.
Yeah. Well, didn't we build in a, a pre-submission review process? With the poller and this town staff, which should make it a little easier to get something accomplished. Because at that time, things are not lining up properly. They can be stopped before a lot of expenses occur, then occurred.
Yes, that's in the proposed set of regulations.
Right. Which is part of our package that was sent out for tonight. But we sort of moved, moved away from a little bit on how to handle the public inquiries unless everybody's happy with just keeping alive Matrix going. And I don't know, we probably put that online somewhere to so the public could see it and know that we aren't, aren't hiding anything.
That's a great idea, Jeff. I think that'll help all of us.
No.
Yeah, it could be some kind of attachment to the town website someplace where there's just a list of things we're looking at intend to address for us, but we'll, we'll, we'll avoid a whole lot of other.
It really helps us a lot too, so we don't miss anything. There's so much involved.
Yeah, we know we'll have to go down and answer all that mail.
Yes, or be satisfied with it or say there's a problem. So I can expand this and maybe talk with Devin how to handle the administration.
Sure. So I just wanted to point out that on, on OPBS's page on the town's website, there is a section for pre-applications, pre-development applications. And we have started populating that with the packets and, and the plans and the minutes from every meeting when you discuss this project. So so this is, I think that would be the appropriate place for this matrix as well.
Okay.
Have to make sure to give it a name that's.
You don't like the matrix?
Right, yes.
You want to call it something different?
Well, something like, like.
Something obvious. Yeah.
Concerns or something that you don't have to ask what that means.
You mean as a title? Yeah. You mean like Mr. Glossary, want to say develop? I don't know. That's why I tried to call it, what is it? Oral School Development Issues? That's not, you don't think that's a good title?
I think it might need more than just issues.
Oh.
Maybe the definition of what, the things we're really thinking about or issues concurrently being considered or something like that.
Yeah.
It's essentially an action item list. So, and some of them are planning, some of them are zoning, and some of them are town. And we should have a, you know, a who's responsible column and then a final disposition column.
Yeah, that's what I had an action and responsibility here. So it could probably accept me, but yeah, somebody has some other good terms, like let me know and I can, I don't like changing, changing it. So it's obvious to, like Hal says, obvious to, when you pick it up what it is. So I just want to use it as a starting tool. So I'll fix that up. Now on, I don't know if you thought we should start looking at anything more tonight, Deb or John?
I, I think a lot of it's, you know, what are folks ready for? Jeff Davis is on the line tonight. And we certainly could get into some of the zoning discussion questions if, if need be.
He's got some feedback, probably.
So, so yeah, I don't know if you want to get into zoning tonight. If people want to digest some of the information that we have, we're certainly prepared to get into the zoning a little bit more tonight.
I wasn't extending it to be a midnight meeting again tonight. You know, there's an awful lot in here. But maybe people should start taking a look at to see if it makes sense. Or whether some of the parameters are realistic or not.
And maybe, maybe next time on, on your matrix, Jeff, we have, we can identify what are planning and zoning issues that you can address through this text amendment out through the site plan or the master plan, because we're just doing text amendment right now. And, and maybe have a discussion about what's the density? You know, do you want to put that in the regulation? Are you all comfortable with that? You heard a suggestion tonight about adding additional parcels to this zone. Let, let's talk about it and get you guys all on the same page for that.
Well, I thought eventually that we want to do that.
I think we need to do that before we amend the regulations or do another revision of the rights.
I think you have to have that done first, right? So maybe we should just leave the, the proposed changes as they are to know that's the style that'd be written in or how they're prescribed.
Exactly. And maybe people can look at your matrix, look at what the draft regulations say and think, am I comfortable with that?
Right. Yeah, we could just go down the list and do that. It's a good point. Maybe that's how we should do it and just pick off a few every, every meeting night.
You know what else? I'm, I'm just thinking now, what might also be helpful for the commission is next to, for example, density of development, if we can identify the section in the draft regulations where that's discussed. So it's easy for the commission to go and look at that section, decide, you know, am I comfortable with the way this language reads?
Right. Okay.
I, I think it's also very important for the commission to recognize and remember that we don't need to design the project now through the regulations. That's what the master plan is going to be in due, but more setting boundaries and parameters. So that, that's really what we want to accomplish with the regulations. We don't need to determine if it's, you know, fifty units or, or, you know, whatever the number is for that section of property. It, it's more like Deb said, what parcels would we like to include? Is it just the Mystic Oral School properties or ones that have been acquired, which add, I don't want to say value, but add something to the development that helps it improve it for the quality of the residents and for the town. I think there's a way to structure this. I also see Jeff Davis just kind of jumped on. He might have a couple of things to put into.
What, you got something to say, Jeff?
Uh, not particularly. I just wanted to let everyone know. I am in fact here and I've been listening. I was just eating my dinner and I didn't want to be rude and do that in front of the camera. But yes, I've been listening and just want to reiterate what has already been said. You know, we want to make sure that you are comfortable with the zoning as a menu of options for any development that comes along. I think that's been something we've been trying to reiterate for the last year now. And so, yes, I think actually that's a fantastic idea to look at what's on your list of concerns that you're dealing with, AKA the matrix, in the context of what the zoning itself can address and then, and then go through that. So, you know, the issues I heard tonight, certainly the, the boundaries, very legitimate thing to be talking about at this stage. Setbacks, obviously something that, that we've dealt with extensively in the current draft. And if those are not adequate, then this is the time to address it. Certainly the height issue is something that we have, you know, continued to talk about and that, that's going to be important here. You know, I think it's important to note and clarify what Rich mentioned to you earlier that you, you could go the route in terms of uses to just say, we will figure that out during the master plan. And you've got to make sure that all the technical issues such as adequacy of utilities, adequacy of roadways and transportation are dealt with before you're comfortable approving something at the master plan level, which will allow you to, you know, make the zoning itself a little more concise. And just, you know, say, okay, we're going to take care of this at, at the master plan level. However, we know that there have been a lot of issues that you brought up, a lot of issues that the public has brought up that, that, you know, as, as a community, you may feel strongly enough about that you want to take care of them upfront in the zoning to make sure that any master plan is formed within those parameters. So that, that's sort of the, the tack we've been taking so far. It's not the only way to do it. And really just want to make sure that you're, you're comfortable with the, the menu of options that, that we've got laid out before you know.
Okay. So it looks like we have, have a plan or at least an outline of a plan to, to move forward. I don't know if anybody has anything else for tonight.
Jeff, my only question is, which I read your template, does that, do the others, which would value, be valued to me to just walk through how you laid out your thinking in that template so that we know? So that we know exactly, you know, what to put in, where to argue. It's kind of, to me, it was like being on a lot of standards committees in the past, something we did all the time. And I'd just like to see what your thought was as far as that document you provided.
Well, I was trying to take? The comments that the public has raised and put them at sort of a high level description? Of basic issues that have to be decided. And then I broke it down into? Some other areas over whether? They were really associated with, say, site plans or or zoning regs or just existing? Say, construction issues that are not part of our responsibility. Or fi- the finance issues such as TIF or tax abatements or? Those type of concerns. That was my only logic. I wasn't. I was trying to keep things grouped to just so they're easy to handle or discuss. And tend to satisfy? What the issues have been raised so far.
That's great. Thank you.
Does that? It's just a starting point. How to eat the elephant? Or the big whale? Well, if nobody has anything else?
Carry a little thing just because I see we have Paige here. I just wonder? One of the things that to me is slightly driving this is that we would really love to have the Pratt Building. And what's it going to take to get the Pratt Building? If if for a couple million dollars, we can get a $5 million building, two thumbs up. That's a good process of this and that's could be our deal with the devil to get it. But I keep hearing slim slightly different things about? How useful it will actually be and what we will actually do with it and what the needs are. Do we really want the auditorium? It looked great to me, but do we need more auditoriums?
That's why I I put that down as a specific item was a Pratt Building improvements. You know, what we expect out of it.
Well, one of those things is what we expect out of the developer. But I'm asking is what do we expect? What do we want? Because I don't think we know what we would want out of the Pratt Building. I know I like a pool. Thank you very much, but move on. What does that actually take? The do we need to make part of it? Zero elevation pool? We need to do major modifications? The? What what are we actually asking someone to do? That's not going to come from us because we don't know.
Parks and Recs, I would think.
Parks and Recs.
But also what we have to be concerned with with is the cost. If the cost is $10 million to just re? Refab the building or refurbish it? That drives up the the density requirements for the? Facility to be.
That's the logic of this is that if if for no other reason for this whole project, because I'm offhand, I'm not that in in no way favor of turning this area into a new node. But if it buys us the Pratt Building, I think maybe that's worth it. And what does that take? So you're right, you need to give wrestler that much money. And then hand over whatever it is he wants to do, write a master, let him do a master plan that allows for it, which I'm not in favor of. So what is it we're hoping to get out of it? And I think?
Maybe we should get a report from Parks and Rec? Or something like that as to what?
Mr. Chair, if I could make a brief comment to that effect? It won't be a long answer. Paige Bronk, Economic and Community Development Manager. So obviously, the Pratt Building is one component of the larger picture, but? The? The proposal? Did spotlight? Opening that building back up? For public recreation? And it was pretty known? I believe by respite certainly was known by the community and Parks and Recreation Staff that? We we were missing some key recreational components. It wasn't that long ago that Parks and Rec? Used to? Operate in that building. Don't quote me on this, but I believe it was all the way up till? Maybe 2010, 2011, thereabouts. And there was strong community? Demand for particularly a heated pool. They're now over at Avery Point? Which is a cold water pool. We have to pay? Again, don't quote me. We have to pay, I believe it's $40, $50,000 a year for limited access to that pool. So I I think the developer did some research on the front end and understanding what the community? Needs were and how it was? Really kind of ashamed that that existing? Public building is not open to the public and it's not even fit to be open to the public at this point. So that was a part of the proposal. It was left to the town. If we were going to partner with them to operate? The facility long term. It was up to us at the town to figure out what it is we want on the inside. So? This is separate apart from the zoning, but the town hired their own consulting firm. That work is still ongoing. And the first thing they did was a community rock, community wide recreation assessment. Second thing they did was evaluate the building more from an engineering standpoint. And the third thing they're doing is some cost estimating? Based upon what the? Communities desires are, what what Groton would like. That cost estimating is still ongoing. It was pretty well known that a good portion of the building would remain in terms of function like the pool? Gymnasium? But there was some parts of the building like the the bowling alley, the racquetball court. Other areas, also the the auditorium. Whether or not that would be altered during that study? Parks and Rec and the consultant identified potentially some needs for exterior improvements, particularly? How the front of that building could be more inviting to the public? Particularly not not just the doorway, but the elevation, could the elevation of an entryway? Line up better with the roadway that's at a higher elevation and potentially where this parking garage is going to be. So? I'll stop there. I just wanted to say that the the town is researching that. A part of that? Is the cost estimating? And that information will be forthcoming.
But it is an important, important point. Does anyone have anything else? And I guess we can can adjourned? I'll make a motion for adjournment. Is there a second?
A second.
How can? Join Jeff Davis and dinner? All right. Everyone have a good night.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good night, everybody.
I'll talk to you soon about what to do with the matrix.